It is 5:30.
It is 5:30. Okay, a call to order a meeting of the Hudson City Council for Wednesday, October 13th, 2021. Could everybody please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on our agenda is the roll call, and as I look around the table, everyone is present for seating. Review and approval of the agenda. We will let go with what is before us. Is there anyone who would like to address the council at this time? Okay, petitions and communications?
We have none.
All right, we do not have public hearings, so we'll now move to reports. City manager.
I guess I got a real hoopery tonight. For Public Works, they wrapped up a water main installation off of Bridge Street going over towards the Quality Inn and Suites. They're putting a water main, they put half of it in this year, they're gonna put the other half in next year, but part of that was part of our in for that MBC grant for 111 Sheldon, similar to what we did on Lake Shore Drive a few years ago, so that's all finished up. But then also, while they were digging there, they decided to fix about 90 feet of storm sewer pipe from the MDOT job when they put the bump outs in that, for some reason, that storm sewer pipe got actually connected to our sanitary system by the contractor. So MDOT is paying to have that remedied, so they got that on. So we've taken some storm water out of our sanitary system as well. Once they were working over there, we've had a perennial issue with groundwater perking out of the rock wall where the upper loop comes into the bridge at the stop sign there. So they installed some underdrain there and connected it to the storm sewer system there, so that should hopefully keep that dried up and we won't have much ice, issues with ice there this winter. Other crews have been working on some of our water tank roofs, some of the roofing on our water tanks and some of our pump stations, making some repairs. Those roofs are, they're still serviceable, but they're old, need a little maintenance, so we got that taken care of, so they should be good for a while. We had a contractor in to install a different style vent on the elevated tank that the big golf ball tank up by the player hall up there. The state mandated all these tank vents be a certain style several years ago, and we ordered in 2020 to do it, and couldn't get it done with COVID, so we had them do it this year. So that's done. Fixed the, you know, fixed the water leak, did some ditching and covert work where needed. Of course, been patching potholes and little things like that. And then, you know, I mentioned this before, you know, the fall flip is gonna start here pretty soon, and weather dependent, we're gonna leave everything kind of out summer more as long as we can, but as soon as that weather changes, you know, everything, the umbrellas are gonna disappear, the picnic tables are gonna get stacked up for the winter, and then after morning, a clear morning, but we're gonna wait as long as we can for that, so moving along. Tree Streets this weekend, back. We're not gonna have the haunted house here this year, just, you know, with, you know, we're still, we're still in a pandemic. But we're gonna have Tree Street out on the street, hopefully it'll be, you know, a safe event and a good event. And the Chamber is actually doing their pony rides in their petting zoo up on the vault deck again, starting at 3 this year. Tree Street is 4 to 7 this coming Saturday, so nice to see that back. Again, this is, this is a bit of a hodgepodge on things, but there was a couple of properties in town that Jeff had been working on for quite some time for property maintenance co-issues. One of those was up at 302 Isle Royal Street, which, you know, to do it right, to get the reaction or the action that the city desires, we had to take the legal route. And we went back and forth on that property, and the owner finally decided to sell it. He sold it to someone, and if anybody takes a ride up there now, there's been a lot of work done at that place.
It really looks nice.
Yeah, it's really started looking nice up there. So, so, you know, it works, but we've gotta follow that process. Second property at 817 Edwards has been a perennial problem in the neighborhood. It's near the Edward Street, ranked the park there. We basically ended up getting a court order to go there and clean up that yard and build property owner. So that's what we did. Chief Donnelly's officers participated in that to make sure that everything went smoothly, Public Works, and I think we're in and out of a couple of those. And got that place cleaned up. It's not perfect, but it's compliant now. And once the, I think the property owners understood and everything went relatively smooth, and I appreciate OPD being able to keep the peace there. But, but that all worked out. Other things, the beautification committee is working with the senior class of high school. Normally, the senior class comes in the spring to pick things up. Why don't we change it up this year and have them come plant tulip bulbs for us this fall? So when they graduate, those tulips will be out, and they can see the fruits of their labor instead of just some time and mayhem, picking up the waterfront. So we'll wait for the tulips to arrive, the bulbs to arrive, and that to get set up and pick a week, or a weekend do that. But I think that would be, you know, a nicer gesture on their part than something tangential that they'll be able to see the fruits of those labors, which is usually an exchange for the city's contribution for those labors to their party at the end of the year. So we'll keep working on that. I did get the email this week at the last meeting that I wasn't present at. The council approved additional match for electric vehicle chargers. I got the email that we got the grant, so we're waiting on the grant agreement right now. So we're really not gonna do anything until we get the grant agreement, see what the conditions are. Hopefully, we can get the equipment order, and we'll probably store it until spring. But that was, that was a nice email to get this week. Our RV park hosts are gone for the year. They left earlier this week. There's still a few campers down there hanging on that they know the water to get shut off anytime soon. But they're all paid up, and they're just gonna stay as, as long as they can and finish off the season there. The, well, let's see. We did a walkthrough of downtown on Monday with the redevelopment ready team, the next team now that comes in. We did a kind of a whole walk down from one end of downtown to the other, looking at buildings, Sheldon Avenue, Bonizuma Avenue, Lake Shore Drive, and so they could really get a feeling about the downtown. Dan Leonard, he was the specialist from MBC, he's been here before, but gave him a little detail on what this building is, what that building is. So we're gonna wait now, he's gonna give us a kind of a debrief memo on where they see some real opportunities here, and then we can talk about those, and the planning commission can talk about those, and see where we want to work with them for them to invest some effort into some redevelopment ready sites in the city, whether they're publicly owned sites or they may be privately owned sites, with a willing, with a willing property owner who'd like to look at redeveloping a piece of property in town. So we'll wait for that memo, and there'll be more to come on that. We were also informed of a grant opportunity with MBC. It's called the Match on Name Program, where essentially there's, we've got a pot of money, grants of up to $25,000 for a 10% match. So for $2,500, you can get another $25,000 for a downtown business to improve, whether it's, you know, given the times wherein they talked about outdoor seating or pickup windows or redoing your entrance or point-of-sale system or something to help, you know, vault a business forward. So Jeff Radcliffe of PETA and I are working on that because it's something that the city would apply on behalf of the business. We can submit up to two applications. The window opens up, I think, next week and closes in November for submitting applications. So we're gonna get an email out to all the downtown businesses, you know, come in, talk to us about your ideas. We'll work it into the application, and then we're probably gonna have to go through and vet. If we have more than two, we're gonna have to sort of vet those because we can only submit two. We have a reasonably good chance of success if we got a good application because it's only for certain communities that are really well ready in the UP. So there's not a whole lot of those, we happen to be one of them, so we'll keep pursuing that, and there may be, there'll be more to come probably the next time we meet. So on October 23rd at D Stadium, which is open by the way, been open for a week now, maybe a week tomorrow?
Yep.
Week tomorrow?
Yep.
Week tomorrow, the MTU InterSquad game is gonna be held at D Stadium. They do one of those games a year on their bi-week, so this year they're actually gonna do it at, on October 23rd at the D instead of at the SDC. Joshon was, you know, kind of excited to do a different venue, so that should be a lot of fun down there that night. Of course, you mentioned the D is open. We'll be starting public skating pretty soon here, probably the next week or so, regular public skating schedule. And pickleball is up and running. Everybody loves pickleball, evidently it's up and running and, and getting used. And of course, we had the Park Life After Parking Deck meeting. Had that meeting, I think that's almost two weeks ago now.
Two weeks ago now.
So Ann and I had a meeting with Pat Coleman to kind of go through all the information that was gathered from that. Pat is working on that now, you know, collating that into themes, if you wanna put it that way. We're gonna have another couple of meetings with him on what he's gonna do for his next presentation, and it's mentioned further on in the agenda, planning on having that next engagement session on November 10th, which is gonna, we have to jockey around the meeting schedules, we'll talk about that later in the meeting. But, but it was, it was a good session, a lot of good input. So Pat's taking that, like I said, and collating that, so, and then we can take that deeper dive into that subject, some of those pieces of subject matter, because it really did boil down into three or four central things that, you know, the public spoke up about and, and put their dots on, so to speak. So that'll be coming, and I guess with that, any questions on anything? Our city paving project shouldn't be finishing up this week. The last two streets have got paved for the city paving project, the small ribbon project on Holden Avenue and western part of Holden Avenue by Bridge Street, eastern Holden Avenue by Drew's Food Mart. They, they're coming in to pave all that this week, so let it permitting, it'll probably be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, they'll be paving. I know folks down on Sandpiper Drive have been asking, they've done some maintenance grading as it gets rougher down there, but I think the plan is that that'll probably be, Sandpiper will be the last thing they pave on their way out of town because they'll probably have to be somewhere the next morning.
Seven, two, right?
Seven, yeah, seven, that's what I'm thinking, it's gonna be Holden Avenue, this over here, over by Jim's, up to seven, and then over to Sandpiper, and I don't think they can do that all in one day.
If they do, then what do you do? So far, they've been, like, moving tighter.
Yeah, paving this year has not been consistent, and we've had several, several conversations, so not so much fun with them, you know, please come pick up, now that you're gone, please come pick up the rest of your toys type of thing, signs and barrels, and we had, I don't know. I think they got those, they get them, I didn't get them there. But they're, they're supposed to be getting those this week as well, so.
I had a question about that next session, I had a couple of people comment that they couldn't see the slides, were having trouble hearing. Are we gonna be doing the same venue or are we gonna?
We're gonna be doing this, we're gonna be doing the same venue. Certainly, any, any data on the slides, you know, that was, that was heard after the meeting, that was something that was in the comments, you know, and, and what I understood from some of the comments, the acoustics presenting was very, people were able to hear that. It was the, the inter, the interchanges at the tables. So Ann and I talked about it, and looking at the number of tables, maybe reducing the numbers of tables, spreading them out so people can have a conversation at each other instead of someone talking right behind them type of thing. So we're gonna look at rear reaches and I think upping the lighting level.
Right, she has options, she'll increase the lighting, so.
$220,000 were you rewarded, that was because of the flood?
Yes, we were, Holden County, City of Holden and the City of Hancock were awarded some supplemental funds in the most recent state budget for flood-related projects, anything that we need to clean up. So haven't heard how we tap those yet. Usually, we'll get something from Treasury, I would expect probably next month. We'll hear from Treasury on what to do that. I've already talked to Ryan about some things, some ideas that, you know, what would Public Works like to see? Because it's like, hey, because we have a lot, we, we got a lot of latent damage out there from the flood that FEMA didn't, it wasn't visible when they were here. And we didn't, you know, we didn't find out about it till a year later, or two years later, or three years later. So looking at that, what could we put that toward, you know, something impactful here? So ask Ryan to really kind of make a, make a list of what he would think, and then boil that down over the winter and see, is that something where the city should do a project? Should we bid out a project? How, you know, what, you know, how can we, how can we get the most bang for those bucks? You know, some of the ideas, a lot of our storm sewers put a beating, and we didn't find out about that till, you know, two, three years later, when things started to settle around them, and we got some ideas on how we could do spot repairs on those, you know, increase the lifespan, so. Yeah, so we were, again, I was kind of waiting to see how, how and when, because it's written in there and it was signed, but so maybe a little, a little windfall there for getting some more projects done. We weren't, weren't awarded as much as Holden County was, however, they, they have the whole county to take care of. I think, you know, and again, thanks to our great marketing and, and the room for stuff that bore us down there, and, you know, we kept, we kept being the squeaky wheel, you know, the cities and Holden County kept being the squeaky wheel down there, so. Yeah, you're trying.
Eric, the Huxman College Avenue, is it a part of us that you're not pretty soon?
We, we did hold the dangers, according to our dangers buildings or events, and it was a process. We have to do it correctly, so we've been through that process. We are now in a, I guess you wanna call it a hold period, where we have to give that property owner, after we've, I don't wanna say the word adjudicated it, but after we've held a hearing, which the owner did not appear at. Once that is done, he's got a period to respond to the hearing officer's findings, which was that building needs to be torn down. Once that expires, we can then take it down. So my hope would be that somewhere before Christmas, Public Works has already taken that building down, and it won't be there.
So it's working that structure, it's getting tired.
It's, yeah, it's getting tired, but, you know, it's, the difficulty is that that type of event, you know, while tragic, you know, was a host fired up someone's house. And, you know, property owner wasn't exactly responsive to a lot of things. In order to do it, to, to get the outcome that we want, we have a process to follow, but we have the dangerous buildings ordinance, and we have, we have to follow that process. And unfortunately, it's not a, you can't just snap your fingers and make it happen. So following that process, so we're, we'll be on good, solid footing when we take it down. There are some escrow insurance monies that came from the company that we're holding an escrow for the demolition, which will be applied toward the cost of us demolishing it. Anything over and above that ends up billed to the property owner, presumably gets applied to their taxes. And, and then eventually it could be recouped, whatever's left over could be remunerated.
Tech construction looks really good out there. Do you have a timeline on the last little stretch?
The last little stretch, I would think they're gonna be out there by the end of the month. And then, you know, traffic will go back to the new normal for the winter, and then I would think, you know, we'll have a little reprieve until graduation, and then it'll be back again. Okay?
Anything else for Eric?
Yeah, just for the redevelopment ready businesses, but I just didn't catch the amount. Oh, they have $25,000. Well, no, it's, it's 25, up to $25,000 with and it requires a 10% match. And, and essentially, this is for core downtown businesses is where these are targeted. So we'll be getting an email, again, an email out to all the businesses on the downtown list, you know, that they can apply and to come in and get ahold of myself or Jeff Radcliffe to put together a, a total grant amount for that, two applications. We can turn in two applications, they will only fund one in any community. So that's not saying if there's three communities eligible in the UP, they're not gonna give one to all three, or one each to all three, but they will only fund one per community.
Anything else for Eric? The data must move to police department.
That it is. Our department answered 226 calls for service. During that time, we made 29 misdemeanor arrests, we issued 19 civil obstruction tickets and two city tickets. We had 18 accidents take place, and we had 39 calls for health and safety. And it's been on the news now and a couple of other things. I told you we're working on a couple of grants at the police department, and one of them was for accreditation. And we did it up, when I say we, Holly did it up mostly, and she did a great job on it. She worked really hard, but it ran into, the deadline was like 10 days before her vacation started, so she had a, she had a vacation coming up on there, she really grinded it out, and we were awarded $38,000 to go forward with accreditation. And I don't think most people, and most people in the police community understand what it is. It's, a lot of the larger departments have already got it, Marquette's only UP, city that's been able to reach that status. And it's a process where you take your policies and procedure and you update them to the point that where you're, you make sure that your department's doing what your policies say, your policies say what your department is doing, and then you have to offer standards and proofs to what is taking place. And where that comes in, good for the city, it makes sure that if something bad does have, take place, let's say an accident during a high-speed chase, it makes sure that the officers know what their role is and what their responsibility is, and that our procedures are what they should be so that the city isn't held liable, the officers aren't held liable, and everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing. It's, from, from the day that we say go, we have two years to get this process done. It's gonna be an enormous amount of work, and it's gonna fall back into, Ken Roberts probably, and really a lot of the officers contributing to do it, so. It's something that we wanted to do, we just didn't have what we had funded, and that's why they, they came up with this, to get small departments like this so that we could bring a level of professionalism within the law enforcement community that citizens deserve. So it'd be a lot of work, but we're looking forward to it generally. We also, finally, through all the COVID stuff, just in time for winter, we got our speed site that we ended before I talked, it's been a long time coming. We made, we've ordered a township on that, and it just arrived yesterday. They can do a few different things. One of the things that they go do, you can set the speed that you want to start flashing, and then there's another speed that it sets, and it actually will hit off the, hit off the red-blue strobes to let people know that if you're going this speed, you're gonna start getting taken. You can't ticket off that, or we can't have any citizens' arrests or anything else like that. There are some speed sites in the school zones and out on campus and stuff like that, but this one's mobile, so you can put it right in people's neighborhoods, we can put it in different places, and it is a good insurance, and a way to show people, in a way, brand-new in a community or brand-new on a certain street. Hopefully, it can help, helps us do a little bit of traffic control, try to keep people doing what they should be, be doing. It's solar, there, there's a battery, but mostly it gets charged with solar power and is portable, and we'll, we'll make some arrangements with the township while we, we share it. We've developed, maybe we'll move it this fall, then next, spread for sure.
Probably it's gonna be like 50 people, we could have some, we could have some, I think they thought we want roads.
Yeah, so I told them, they could have it from now until, they could have it till now until May, and we'll take over that. Yeah, we'll, we'll work it out, and, and, you know, I, I think they have a lot more roads, but we have a lot, we have enough neighborhoods and stuff like that, and it's, you know, somewhat, it'd be convenient too when people have problems. And there are some areas that people are talking about that they'd really like to see this. And like I said, I might get it all set up and pop it out a couple of times this fall. And then, you know, if we have a construction area where people are speeding, different kind of areas. But yeah, we'll, we'll play nice with it.
Anything else for John?
If I, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I did a 10 good things list, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but there's, there's a few, just a couple of really good things on there. I just wanted to mention our RV part did close for the year, but we had the best year ever. We were almost twice the volume that we were in 2015. And, you know, lots of good tourism things in there. We made another list of most affordable small towns in the US, which gets all over the internet, and Rockaway Mon was in a top 10 list on Fox News this week of places to visit for youth people nationally. And so I'm not gonna go through the entire list, but I did wanna bring those things up that there, there's a lot of good things going on and wanna keep them going that way.
Very good. Comments? Okay, very good. Been moving along. I'm entertaining a motion regarding our consent agenda.
So move it.
We move this court to approve our consent agenda to further comment. Do we call a talks?
Needham?
Yes.
Call, yes, here, sorry. Dow?
Yes.
Back?
Yes.
Suits?
Yes.
All right, if that passes. Moving then down to new business resolution 2021-1823.
Okay, this is a lot split that was previously approved by the Planning Commission. And this has to do with the large parcel property, everybody kind of says it's the one behind the Sears store above Evergreen Drive, South of Sharon Avenue. And it also has to do with the construction of the, the new extended state motel that's occurring on Razorback Drive. The owners of the hotel, hotel or extended state, I don't know what the exact term will be, had requested to move their stormwater pond, which is part of their approved site plan at the Planning Commission, had requested to, to move it over a bit so they had some more room for snow storage. Of course, looking at moving it over a bit, they didn't own the property that they wanted it to touch, so they had worked with the owners of the larger parcel next door to split off a piece so they could add that to the, to call it the end of their lot, so they could put all of their infrastructure on their property. Of course, they, you've got two, two-wheeled parties looking for a lot split to add that onto the, what's called the extended state parcel, went to the Planning Commission, Planning Commission approved that, but all lot splits have to be approved by the city council. So I get essentially requesting of the city council to allow the .32 acre parcel to be split off, the larger 22-plus acre parcel, so they can square off that end and slide their stormwater pond a little over to the east.
I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
We move this court to approve resolution 2021-1823. Is there further discussion? Do we call the council?
With Al?
Yes.
Yes, Salem?
Yes.
Needham?
Yes.
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Paul? Yes, here, sorry.
Yes.
All right, if that passes. Next, resolution twenty-two-one dash eighteen-twenty-four.
And this has to do with the, all of the annual master contract for a transit system that Joey typically signs with.
It's a five-year, new five-year agreement, I heard.
This is a five.
Contract.
And, um, essentially if we're going to have a transit system, we have to sign a contract with them, so they will help us pay for our transit system. Um, I guess, are there any questions on that?
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Or?
Move, court to approve resolution twenty-two-one dash eighteen-twenty-four. Further discussion? We poll the council.
Salo?
Yes.
Mudala?
Yes.
Here, sorry. Paul, yes, Becken?
Yes.
Needham?
Yes.
Suits? Yes.
All right, that passes. Next, proposed jail site.
So there's a, there's a memo in front of you, in front of all of you that I'm going to read here. Um, we continue to work with Hope County and Portage Township on the siting of new sheriff slash jail slash courts complex off of Sharon Avenue. Of course, the county is in negotiations with a property owner out there to buy his site, um, to relocate the county jail and of course the sheriff's department and the courts, um, because they all should be, um, in one location. Wherever that complex is, it must be within the corporate limits of the city of, city of Hope County as it is the county seat. Of course, the site off Sharon Avenue is actually in Portage Township. It's right next to the city on both sides, but it's in Portage Township. In order for the county to relocate the complex at the site, it must be in the city limits. So the site could be annexed to the city of Hope County, which would fit the state's requirements for location or jurisdiction. Requirement. Um, Portage Township has conceptually agreed to an eventual annexation already. And currently proposed by Portage Township is a phased approach to the annexation whereby the property would initially be subject to a P.A. four-twenty-five agreement with the township, um, between the Hope County and Portage Township. And the site would be closed on, so the county would buy the site. And then when the spec- within a specified period of time, the county would build out, occupy that new complex. At which time, the public act four-twenty-five agreement would be changed to a standard annexation. That way, you know, the county's there, they're oper- they're building, they're operating, then it's annexed to meet the statutory requirements before they occupy it. If for some reason the county complex doesn't get sited there, the site would just, under the four-twenty-five, revert back to Portage Township. Um, and I presume the county would have to find another site. Of course, there'd be future agreements, resolutions and so on that have to be drawn up, reviewed by our attorneys, placed on council agendas as touchpoints along the way. But for the county to keep moving forward on this, they, they asked, um, and requested a simple vote of support for this plan so the county can confidently move forward with this. And, and you know, this, um, you know, this site, I think, my opinion, it's a good site for them to do that as, as opposed to, you know, previous attempts to build a new jail right in the middle of the city. Um, so, you know, basically asking if there's a motion and support, hopefully a vote to support this in principle. I mean, there's a lot of things to do along the way, but the county would like to, would like to know from the city because we haven't officially gone on record, so to speak, as, as supporting this as an option for a jail.
I thought Portage Township had wanted to postpone the discussion because the voters at this time, I agree that these are great sites for places to put it, but voters have consistently been turning down new jail and for new jail millage. So wouldn't we, would they get new spaces? He's quite the kind of person, of course.
Well, I, I think right now the county, the county's looking at this as they've owned, uh, a site, they've still got work to do in getting a millage or a new jail. And this would be, this is step one, in, in my opinion. This is, this is step one. The, the county, the county board, sheriff's department, however you want to look at it, that they've got, they've got work to do in coming up with a, with a final design cost and then that millage, that M word, that millage. Um, and, and realistically, um, based on everything they've looked at, there, there's no, I, I, I don't, I can't say there's a good argument that we don't need a county, a new county jail. There are significant issues with the jail that we have. So this would be the first step, and of course the county getting to acquire the property. And then they're going to start working on, you know, the millage, so to speak. Um, and that's, that's up to the county to do that. Again, Portage Township's agreed to this in concept. And, you know, the county wants to know if the city supports this as well, so they could start that process to move an eventual, because it'll come to, I'm, you know, assuming that money's not going to fall from the sky, there's going to be a millage vote someday.
I guess my, um, my concern is, what, what do we, what exactly, what, why does our vote matter?
I'm sorry?
Why does our vote matter and what's, do we have legal ramifications from this?
I, I don't.
I think a great idea would support it.
And this, right now, this vote is showing that the city council would, in principle, support this plan. And then when the time comes for the annexation, that the city would, you know, because we have to be a willing party in that annexation in order to get the jail sited within the city. The, the sheriff's department has to be in the corporate city limits, you know, to be legal in the state of Michigan as we are, but how we see.
And if, if the millage fails, are you going to have a side negative fee? Negative here. If the millage fails, no deal, then that property is going to revert back to Portage.
Definitely. That's exactly right.
No, no fault. It's the exact theory. Yeah, they don't want to proceed if we're not going to support this plan for P.A. one-four-twenty-five annexation. We, we have to support that for its point five exercise. So that's all we're really here to say, is this idea of a annexation, it's not fine. Except for that, we all get the vote on the millage because we're coming here for this.
Yeah, exactly. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to support as presented.
Support file.
Okay, a move, uh, it's a move in supporting to proceed with this plan with our, with our full, uh, in principle.
Yeah.
In principle, in principle. Okay, your further discussion. We poll the council.
Needham?
Yes.
Suits? Well, Salo?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Down?
Yes.
Paul? Yes, here, sorry.
Yes.
All right, that passes. Next, November and December meeting dates.
So we get to that time of the year again where holidays and, and different things, you know, tend to trip up this council script for about every, with about every two years, we end up in this situation for every other year. Um, so right now, Anne put together a memo and a schedule here. What we'd like to do is hold that second public engagement night on the big hardy deck on November tenth, which we've kind of already talked about. And then to reset the meeting dates in November and December so they're not coincident with holiday weeks and such. So it would be to move the November meeting to Wednesday, November seventeenth, um, by thirty here. And then December meetings, given the amount of time in November, to move the December meetings to Wednesday, the first and Wednesday, the fifteenth.
So the seventeenth would be actually a week before Thanksgiving.
Yes, because otherwise we fall on the tenth and then Thanksgiving. And then of course have no meeting on the twenty-fourth of November.
I'll entertain a motion to approve these dates.
So moved.
Second.
A move is supported to approve the moving of the meeting, uh, in November to the seventeenth of November and the, uh, two meetings to be held on the first and fifteenth of December. Is there further discussion? We poll the council.
Down?
Yes.
Paul? Yes, here, sorry.
Are you?
Becken?
Yes.
Needham?
Yes.
Suits? Yes, and Salo?
Yes.
All right, that passes. All right, the next item, future agenda items.
I have a couple of things I would like to.
Great, yeah.
So the first has to do with the library. You know that our district library director resigned and we are working with an acting director. Um, in the meantime, there has come an opportunity for public money, public grant money to improve infrastructure for libraries. The catch to this is that the application has been made by a civic official. I mean, we're talking up to fifty thousand dollars. The library board was talking at a meeting that we could use this for education to improve broadband education in this town. And I was just wondering, with our acting director, she's a little reluctant to call people, because I think she's called Peter Eric or Mia. If that would be something, I mean, I went to the portal and said, if anybody can apply, you have to, or actually get money actually to the city. So you would apply for money on the behalf of the people. So that's one thing I just wanted to let you know. And if it's okay, I'll have Susan on your website, okay? The second thing is I've been thinking about, especially after our last couple of meetings where one resident said, you know, no idea what was going on. And I was talking about a newsletter, especially we've got another public engagement hearing coming on. Is there somewhere maybe we could send a notice out that we just acquired with city news? Um, not everybody listens to the local radio and reads the local paper, sorry guys. But they know. I mean, and I'm not sure how you're supposed to get your news, your local news otherwise, but that's just related. But then they're complaining because they have no idea. I'm wondering if maybe we could send out, uh, just a one-page flyer and have a note about the upcoming engagement, maybe everything else that's going on in the city.
You think sending it out via the mail?
Yes, not in Salo. And the people who have internet access do not all think to use it to go to the city website to do a little on the air though. Well, I'm just trying to think about a way we can maybe catch the notice or catch the audio of everybody in the community. So really, you can't say, well, you didn't listen or, or you're on the local, well, everybody getting picked up their mail.
I tore most of my eyelid, to be honest.
Well.
Very little comes.
For many years, we've put a newsletter in the summer, winter taxes. And most of the people that come in to pay, hand this down, will put the newsletter in the mail and say, please go that away. And when we ask them, do you want the newsletter? They say, no. So I don't even know, I mean, did you ever know it was in there? Oh, okay, good. Um, so we've done it that way, although that would be a little late now for this.
Yeah.
Um, we can also put it on, if it's just that one thing, on the postcard for the, um, water bills.
Water bill.
Oh.
Well, we've only, we've got, we've got a small window to put something extra on our water bills.
I'm picturing my water bill. I'm not seeing a lot of emails.
There's a lot of rooms, but it's, yeah, it's literally three postage stamps wide. We could do that as a better alternative. Spending, I mean, it's not insignificant when you send out five thousand things versus we're already sending those out.
Right. And so we can put on the water bill about the next public engagement night because it will go out before that. Um, and then we will put another newsletter in the, which has.
Maybe tell people how they can stay informed of the event and just face.
We, and, and we have, you know, we have done that and we encourage people, we ask people to sign up for, for the emails. You know, we try not to bombard people with emails so they actually know there's something worthwhile reading in them. But we are, we, we exist in an age where there's so many sources for information that, um, you, and you look at us or even the community that's smaller than us and I, I hate these word bandwidth, but to, to try to tap all of those resources to catch everyone and, um, you know, we, we have people sign up for the email and you ask them, you ever, you ever look at them? Oh, no, I haven't looked at them. Um, but it's, it's, it, it is a, it is a constant, um, battle.
It is. I mean, in terms of city news, I mean, this office is, of course, is now, I mean, it's, we listen to, we're the definitive word. And I'm not sure.
I thought that was Facebook.
Yeah, you and a bunch of other people. Oh, no. Um, but I, I, maybe come to either the water bill and, you know, for city hacking, go to cityofhope.com or call us out or something.
I think it's very convenient for people to say, I didn't know what's going on. If anybody is interested in the city at all, they look at it, say. I think that's just a hot spot for people. They can use that just to say, oh, I didn't know.
I think that's true with some. I don't think it's the other one.
I like the idea of the water bill. This is me now.
It stands out actually because it's not all slathered.
Yeah.
Black down. Do look at that. Especially where it says a mall. That's true. Exactly.
And our water bills are, you know, we're median, so just so everybody remembers.
All right, anything else under future agenda items?
Well, this isn't a future agenda item, but I have mentioned that I think we should rename this, uh, agenda item itself. But as you know, I usually mention stuff related to, uh, thing is that my daughter either used to be involved in it, local youth, um, cross country ski team, the ski tigers is having a gear swap Saturday uh, down at Kastner at the, so early morning, it's your drop off or you're selling. And then I believe it's, you know, you should confirm this on the, on the ski tiger website or whatever, but about eleven in the morning Saturday or eleven-thirty when the sale starts. So it's people selling things, they make some money and a small portion of it goes to the ski tigers and the fun right there. So spread the word. If you guys include it in your report, then that's awesome too. That's pretty, that's very worthy cause.
Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
That was a seven-on-nothing field. Thank you, everyone.